Okay, got a motion. One second. Call in favor?
All right.
All right. Number?
We can't hear you.
We can't hear you.
Really?
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Yikes. I'm usually pretty loud. All right. Now, we have a... All right, I gotta go with this first then. Hey, here's the rules of engagement. I know that this is gonna be a lively meeting tonight, okay? We expect it. We've heard it before. A lot of the folks have been in here before and given us quite a bit of feedback. Believe me, the planning commission is very sensitive to everything you said, okay? What we're gonna do, instead of having you call out whatever you wanna say, you're gonna come down here, Jerry's gonna sign in sheet, 'cause we gotta keep track of everybody to put in the minutes, okay? And what we're gonna ask you to do is talk to the audience, okay? And we're right with that. You're gonna come down here, sign in, and you'll get your three minutes. Now, we're gonna have to ask you, you gotta be a township resident, paying taxes to Max at Tawnee, or are we gonna say adjacent property owner? Yes. If you're a Kutztown resident and you live on Baldy somewhere on the other end of town, we will accept your input, but it's gotta be in writing. You can't come down and use the time. It's just the way it goes. I'm sorry about that, but that's the rules, okay? You're gonna get three minutes. And I was just... Somebody just told me more. That three minutes is for all night. So if you come down here for one of the plans or for something and you use up your three minutes, unfortunately, you're done for the night, okay? Well, go ahead, laugh. I mean, but that's the way it is. Okay, those are the rules. So, what I would suggest is, let's try not to be terribly repetitive, okay? If somebody does a really good job... For example, if one of our professors come up and does a very good job of presenting the exact same issue you would like, but you have two, I would suggest you stock with your number two, instead of reiterating what has already been suggested. Is that all right?
Done.
Yes.
With all due respect, with a project this large, I think that people should have the freedom to say whatever they'd like.
Well, that's okay, but they get three minutes, okay? And we gotta get through this tonight. There's a conditional use hearing on Monday, all right? I don't understand all the workings, I'm sorry. But, we gotta get through this tonight. I saw a hand. Yes.
Do we, as the extra person, do we get to have our name put into the record also, that we're in agreement with the person making the speech?
I think that's a great idea. Everybody else? I mean, yes. Why not?
Yes, I have one quick question. Things this large, okay?
Yeah.
Why are we pushing hopskins to a conditional use hearing like this, that, Duke? What's the hurry?
I wish I could tell you.
Because the township only has so many days to conduct the hearings. And to conclude the hearings.
Okay, well, the township is the people, okay?
I'm sorry, those are your legislatures that wrote the rules in the township, and if we don't get it through the time period provided for... I know, I'm self-spoken, I'm trying. If we don't get it through within the time period provided for the municipality's planning code, it becomes a deemed approval, and that takes away any say-so the township has in the development. That's why there's time limits that we have to get through. And in response to the question about the time limits, the Pennsylvania legislatures have written the Sunshine Law. The municipalities can provide time regulations, and as time regulations, the township is elected to an act of resolution that provides three minutes.
Numerous times when things were supposed to be discussed at meetings, and they did that. So that's why.
I understood the plan, yes.
It's replication, that's how we title it.
Is Duke, is Duke the only one on the plan?
No, no. Both C and B and Duke are on both on the plan.
But Duke has to be done by all the things. All the study, all the research. It has to have your...
It's a very clear question.
The other...
Thank you. Thank you. I was gonna use my child voice, but this will be much better. Let me, if the chairman will allow me, let me explain the rules very, very quickly.
Do you identify yourself too?
I'm Michelle Mayfield, I'm the city... I'm sorry, the township solicitor this evening. Mr. Chairman, may I briefly explain the rules to hopefully get through this this evening? Okay. So the timeframe starts from the date of application. I don't have the timeframes in front of me, but we do... The timeframes are not only applicable to the first hearings, it's to conclusions of the hearings. That's if you've been reading about the issues in Maiden Creek, that's what occurred. So this is a hot button right now, and we have to get through this. Tonight is only for the planning commission to make recommendations to the supervisors on these plans. This commission will not be making any decisions tonight on either of these plans or either of these applications. This is only their opportunity to make recommendations to the supervisors for the upcoming conditional use hearings. With that said, we're willing, in accordance with the policy that's established by the township, three minutes. Again, we ask you not to be repetitive, to hear everybody this evening, but also know that to be on the record, while your comments will be in the minutes today, to actually be on the record, you will have to appear at the hearing as they are scheduled. Duke being scheduled for this Monday. We're still finalizing the date for C and B. So that would be your opportunity to actually be a party and present testimony to the supervisors. To help expedite this tonight, Township Secretary Jerry has, as I said, you have three minutes. She has two sheets of paper, she can hold them up. The yellow will be a warning after you've spoken for two minutes, letting you know you have one minute left. The three... The red will be that your time is up, will let you conclude your thought. This is how the appellate courts treat us when we're in front of them, to let you know you will let you wrap up your thoughts. Are there any questions as to how this is... We hope this goes this evening, in consideration of what I said.
Michelle, we want them to come front to sign in and to make their comment.
Yes. In case you did not hear, Jerry, she has sign-in sheets, so we're asking you to come down here, sign the sign-in sheet before you speak, and come up front and give your speech. Before we allow that to start, though, we're gonna ask the... We'll give the applicants the opportunity to give an opening statement or presentation.
So your three minutes, does that include the time in which the applicants are responding to us, or is that only the time we are speaking? Because they can filibuster us out.
They're not... No, I will not let that occur. I'm not...
I think all questions or all comments should be made before it gets turned over to the developers to possibly answer, which they're not required to answer any questions, but they can if it's a question that they would like to answer.
Did everybody hear Jerry with that one?
Yeah, we're gonna protect that three minutes. Okay, we're gonna protect the three minutes. I think when folks come down here, because we want you to talk this way, you're really talking to the people down here in the front row. Believe me, we understand where you're coming from, okay? We do. What I would like to see happen is, at some point, the folks that are presenting these projects are gonna respond to you, okay? Like, I'm gonna ask one question. Not everybody can see it. Here's a tractor trail going up Eagle Point Road. It's halfway across the yellow line, okay? And I'm gonna ask them, what are you gonna do to make this not happen anymore? And I'm glad that I was behind this one and not in front of it, 'cause when I'm coming down the hill at Eagle Point Road, it's a lot more dangerous. At least I was behind it. I'm gonna ask them, what are you gonna do to make sure this doesn't happen? Or this, where there's a car pinned against the guardrail. Because the tractor trail's on a road, it's clearly marked, you can't have 54-foot trailers on this road. Clearly marked, okay? So those are the first two questions I'm gonna ask. What are you gonna do to make sure this doesn't happen anymore? And some of you were at the hearing from last month, where they said, "Well, that's not our job." And I'm gonna say, "No, it is." Because you're the ones that are letting these people in your building, okay? So that's what... That's where we're coming from up here, okay? Now, we are... Yeah, okay, I'll stop there. And then the first question I'm gonna ask each developer is, what would you like to have as a deliverable at the result of this meeting tonight? So they're gonna tell me, "We would like you to give me final approval so we can stop building tomorrow afternoon." Okay? Well, you all know, that's not gonna happen, all right? And there are some things that the planning commission, the engineer, and the zoning office have found in these reports that are less than acceptable, okay? That's all part of this. And for the, you know, for the folks from... Should I call you prologist or Duke now? I mean, it doesn't make any difference. Okay. The folks from Duke have been here for two and a half years now, or something like this, right? They're an owner-operator, the other fellows are spec warehouse. I think there's people out here that think of them differently, okay? We might even bring up what happens, 'cause there's a Wall Street Journal article that's saying the vacancies are going up, went up by 30 or 40 percent. What's gonna happen to this million or 750,000-square-foot building if you can't fill it? Okay? So maybe we're gonna be asking for escrows now, like we're starting to ask for escrows for the solar farms. I don't know how much it costs to take down a 750,000-square-foot building, but we're probably gonna wanna worry about that, okay? So those are the things that are gonna happen tonight, and you're all gonna get a chance to get your say in, all right? So, yeah, we gotta get started. What I... The Duke folks, you guys are on first, okay? So what I would like is, I got two... You know, I didn't bring them, but I got two rolls of paper like this over. And I gotta be honest, I didn't go through them all this time, okay? Not yet. What I would like is a quick summary of what's different now than what might have been the case two and a half years ago? Is it two and a half? Yeah, it's about two and a half now, right? So if you can start with that, and you can give the folks a presentation of what Duke's gonna do to be a good neighbor, to help with this kind of stuff, and what might have changed that's, I would say, material between time zero and time now. That would be a big help for all of us, okay? Thank you. Now, we're up.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
I started balancing stuff on my lap, so hopefully you can hear me okay.
Well, I understand the lectern right here, the teacher's station.
So my name is Greg Davis. I'm with the Saul Ewing Law Firm. I'm representing Duke Realty. A lot has happened in the last couple of years since we saw you. It was June of '21, when the board of supervisors approved our preliminary land development plan.
You can stand up here.
If everybody else has to stand, he needs to stand.
The team...
Very good. Stand up.
It's gonna start there, and it's gonna move on from there.
You need to see your face.
Stand up.
You need to see our face, we need to see yours.
My job is to present to the planning commission. This is the board we're presenting to tonight. I hope you respect that. So Duke has decided, just by way of background, you'll recall that after the supervisors approved our preliminary plan, it was appealed to Court of Common Pleas of Burks County, which upheld the approval, and thereafter it was appealed to the Commonwealth Court, which overturned the approval. Duke has decided, rather than to pursue further appeals, to withdraw its plan. It has formally withdrawn its plan. This is a brand-new plan, we're gonna treat it like it is, and we're now subject to the new ordinance, an ordinance that went into effect in '22, and that requires, among other things, that we obtain conditional use approval for the warehouse, proposed warehouse use. So to that end, we submitted conditional use and land development, preliminary land development plan application. In June, we received review letters from Chris and Chris earlier this month. We have our full team of consultants here, and a Duke prologist rep with us tonight to answer any questions that you might have. And Don, to your point, I think it's a good place to start. Let's have our civil engineer, Jim Bannon, from Naive Newell, walk you through the plan, tell you, remind you what it looked like, show you, talk you through the changes that have been made, and then hopefully answer any questions that you have, you or anybody in the audience may have. Does that sound okay?
Yep.
All right.
I'm Jim Bannon from Naive Newell. Brief summary of what we have matching what was submitted last time. Lot 1's the eastern end of the site. The site itself is the northwest corner of 222 and Long Lane Road. Lot 1 is about a 660,000-square-foot warehouse with parking for trailers and automobiles. Relocated Hotenstein Road closer to the center of the site. The intersection with 222 will be a roundabout that will be spoken to later. That also is very similar to what was presented originally. Lot 3 is on the western end of the site, and this is about a 1 million-square-foot warehouse with associated trailer parking and automobile parking.
What are you running at, Jim? Tell me, how many, how many pay acres of unimperiumal area is parking lot buildings? So we got 1.6 million square feet of building. How much is there enough in the... Do you know?
Off the top of my head, I don't, but it is on the zoning data table, title sheet.
Forty acres.
So the maximum improvements of layouts is 80 percent. Lot 1, we're at 68 percent, and Lot 3, we're at 41 percent. Okay, so to focus on what has changed, as Greg said, we had to make some changes to address the township's new zoning ordinance. One requirement, this is not as pretty of a rendering, but it shows this a little more clearly, is a 500-foot buffer from principal building occupied by existing residential, institutional, or educational use. So these red lines show that buffer. The only change we've had to make is there was originally a driveway for Building 3 that was in that 500 feet. Since we're assuming impervious, associated with the warehouse cannot be in that buffer, we relocated that driveway. There's also a requirement for no... A 200-foot buffer from residential districts. There's no residential zoning districts within 200 feet of this lot, so we didn't have to make any changes for that one. The main change is the new requirement that you need a 50-foot wide, 6-foot tall earthen berm around the perimeter of the site. It's not very pretty, it's just bright green, but it shows you the location of those. So we went around the perimeter site to the greatest extent we could. There are a couple breaks for the driveways. There's a wetlands and water course in the middle, so obviously we didn't wanna disturb that.
Great question.
Yes.
We're right in the middle of making our landscape zoning changes to the ordinance. They're... The last one wasn't that great. We're improving. Are you gonna...
The microplanning's great.
What's that?
The microplanning's great.
No, no, I believe that.
Yeah.
But hopefully, we're gonna have a little bit more definition for you. The next... Right now, it's, you know, landscape.
We would love to hear what's happening.
Thank you.
So I will say, with the addition of this berm, it's not just an earthen berm, it's landscaped, and you're right, the original zoning code, basically, we just needed some street trees and a couple of landscaped islands. With this new landscaping incorporated into the berm, we have about 175 more shade trees and 1,060 more evergreens around the property. Related to that landscaping on top of the berm, there was a question if they could survive in a 10-foot-wide berm. I talked to our landscape architect, and he thought the plannings that we selected would have no issues. The larger ones, Black Gum and Black Cherry, he said tend to have deep roots and do well on slopes. Not my area of expertise, but he assured me they could survive in this type of situation. Sorry, too many exhibits. We understand that this berm is an important part of this zoning change, so we prepared a couple exhibits that basically show what it would look like from certain areas on the site. For instance, this A1 is a section cut through Hotenstein Road right here, what it would look like looking at that building. And you may not be able to see from where you are, but there's a dash line that meets the proposed building about 2/3 of the way up. So if you're in a car driving by there, you'll only be able to see the top 30 of that building. And that's only from the earthen berm. That does not include the shrubs and the trees that are planted. You know, we believe once they're planted, it should do a very good job of blocking that building. This section, A2, is from Hotenstein, looking towards Lot 3, and the topography of this This section here is, there's no road here, but this would actually be if you were standing at the back of the berm on the northern property line, a 5 and 1/2-foot person would not be able to see this building. Again, just based on the earthen berm and not the landscaping, which should provide more. Section C is if you were on 222, looking at Building 3, this area right here, and again, you can see the top 10 feet or so of the building. The final one is if you were in a car on 222, looking towards Building 1, up this way. In this case, with just the berm, you would be able to see the whole building. Topography of the site, there's really not much you can do about that. It drops down to the water course before going up again. We do believe that the berm and the existing wetlands vegetation will provide good visual screening there, but the berm alone is not enough to block this building. And the main reason for that is, we're looking through this area here, and this lot surrounds kind of the Hotenstein House. That's about 8 acres, that's being dedicated to the Historic Preservation Trust of Burks County. So we're not doing anything in that land. That's why the berm is so far away from 222. This is where the actual property line for Lot 1 is located.
That was gonna be my next question. So there is gonna be a dedication to surround the Hotenstein House.
I think it's more like 11 acres than 8, but...
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, 11 acres. Did I say 8? So that is the main changes since we were last in front of the board.
Now, if the height of the building, I apologize. I could tell you what the old building was. What's this one, is it 40 feet or 50?
So I'm not sure if that's been decided yet, but these renderings, I showed the max allowable of 50 feet. So it will not be higher than that.
So that's why, you understand why I asked the question?
Yes.
If it's a 50-foot building and they're hidden, if it's a 40-foot building, it's gonna be more. That's where I was going with the question.
Yes. Yes. These all assume the maximum height of 50 feet in a worst-case scenario.
And the other point that we started getting into as we learned more about this is that the 50-foot is when we include anything on the roof, right? Or we're not gonna put HVAC on the roof, that's to the top of the building. Yeah, go.
Basically, the prologists perceived the new visual effects require a 42-inch parapet around the entire top of the building to screen any units for both visual and sound purposes.
Doesn't that make building taller?
Yeah. But still, it's still the maximum height that Mr. Baird had said will not exceed the ordinance there. So the clear height inside the building will need to be set so that that 42-inch parapet does not exceed the ordinance maximum allowed.
So it's both visual and anticipation. You use the...
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Jim, you said those are the changes. During my review, I noticed, though, that the main driveway to Lot 1 was reorientated and changed. It's way different from the original plan.
The engines drive to Lot 1?
The engines drive to Lot 1, yes. The stacking of the trucks. Now, that may be a plan that you have been using for a long time, but the approved plan by the supervisors, that preliminary plantation, had a totally different configuration.
I did not notice that. A driveway, I'm using the same location, you're saying the driveway...
The driveway is in the same location, but the stacking of those trucks has been reoriented.
So that may have been a decision made...
That may have been a decision made by prologists to increase the stacking. There's now, there's now three entrance lanes showing, so trucks can sit free across without backing up on the Hotenstein Road.
So it's wider, the road is basically wider.
Not the actual road, just the driveway from the road.
It looks better to me. That's what you're telling me.
This part here, yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't realize that had changed.
And the other change is Lot 3, and the three... You had three driveways originally from Lot 3, now there's only two. Again, my concern, which there was not a lot of detail in your submission, though, is how is truck stacking happening with there? There's no guard shack shown and so forth. So just wondering how that all gonna happen.
So there is a guard shack shown in this location. I'm not sure how finalized that is at this point. Our intent would be trucks can enter, and although it looks small on a plane of this scale, that's about 1,300 feet, so we figure that's 17 trucks or so, and if there is ever an issue of trying to back up, there is a lot of trailer spaces right in this front lot where they could possibly pull off and wait until things clear.
Will there still be access to the second driveway, or is that just more of a emergency access?
For now, we're calling it out as an access. We do have... The chairman mentioned concerns about trucks, so if you look at our driveway configuration, the right turn out of every driveway is a very small radius, so trucks can't make that turn. They can come in this way and leave that way, but it's too tight for them to go west on Hilltop or north on Hotenstein. But as of now, this was intended as a full movement right in, left out driveway.
I think you all understand, there's nobody going up Hotenstein Road, right? We cannot have one of these trucks walk Hotenstein Road.
Yeah, we understand, that's definitely a concern of the township. So what we did in coordinating with the township is, after this last driveway that serves Lot 1, we narrowed the road down. There is a little cul-de-sac, we'll call it up here, where if someone happens going the wrong way, they can turn around. That also can be used to service a water facility that will be there. But we've really narrowed the road to meet the existing, and you're familiar, it's hard for two regular cars to pass side by side. So we matched what's there now to make it as narrow as possible, so trucks can't go in that direction.
Same rate.
Correct, yes. Correct, yes.
Staying with Lot 3 then, I wanna focus a little bit on the cemetery. So, with this now new reconfiguration of this driveway entrances to Lot 3, how does that affect what you're doing with the cemetery? And can you explain in little detail what's actually happening with that cemetery?
So, right in this little green area here is what's currently the Kemp family burial ground. Duke originally went through the process with the orphan court and got the approval to relocate those remains. After the neighbors were very vocal about not wanting that, they decided to leave it as is, and they're now going to enhance the cemetery. They're gonna rebuild the brick wall that's around it. There's a, I believe there'll be three flags out front, new wrought iron gate and on top. And it's hard to say at a plane of this scale, but there's parallel parking spaces here. So, if someone wanted to visit it, there's a parking space with them right here, and they can just walk up. Essentially, we're working around it, so we don't need to change anything in that area.
So, with that, how will a resident visiting a cemetery get through the gate? Is there some special access they're gonna have?
I'm not sure if that's worked out yet, but I assume there's gonna need to be some kind of a access easement to the public. Operationally, I'm not sure how far that's gotten. Yes, I'll leave it to him, but it has improved based on township and Penn dot comments. Would you like that now, or are we...
No. Okay, so, changes. From the approved plan to today, you have shown now three very large utility easements on the plan. Can you explain why and what's going on with that?
And that may be more for Ron Madison of Colliers to speak to. But if we're talking on the northern property line, there is a 50-foot wide transmission easement to First Energy. There's currently an easement that runs north and south. They asked for one to go out to Long Lane to service that area. Below that, there is an easement to the Maxitani Township Municipal Authority. There are two proposed wells on the site and water treatment facility, treatment and distribution. Again, Ron yelled at me for saying the wrong thing. But Duke will build this and then dedicate it to the township to serve the public. And I'm sorry, the third easement you were referring to? So, there is an onsite sewer pump station, a couple hundred feet north of the intersection of Hotenstein and Hilltop. All onsite, sanitary will get to there, at which point it will be pumped down to the IBS pumping station on Route 737.
So, I wanna talk about the Med Ed. Why is that one so large? What's happening over there?
So, again, I wasn't directly involved in these talks, but they asked for a new substation on this northern side of the property. So, I think they may have already started the work improving their transmission lines out here. There's gonna be a new substation, and again, from there, new distribution lines out to Long Lane Road.
Wouldn't you be involved with this? Is it your plan?
Well, we show grading around their site. They're very specific. They don't want anything draining over, through, or under their substation. Obviously makes sense. So, we had grading there. We took it into account and counted it as impervious to our stormwater calcs. But as far as the design, they gave that to us. It's about a 200-by-200-foot gravel pad. The equipment that's inside, I really don't know anything about.
Why is that not screened then?
Screened by landscaping.
Landscapes screened, yes. Because that could be quite large.
There's, and they do have it fenced in.
Just a comment.
Okay.
How, since you did the site work, and you mentioned now about the impervious surface being increased because of the Med Ed, how has that affected any of your stormwater designs since the last time we saw this plan?
So, it essentially is still the same. For background, Colliers, the geotectical engineer, did a car hazard study and they did soil, stormwater testing all through the site. There really is one area down near the intersection of Hotenstein and Hilltop that's good for infiltration. So, we have infiltration, above-ground infiltration basin there. The rest of the stormwater systems, we have two underground, what's called MRC systems, Managed Release Concept. Two underground on Lot 3, a big one, still on Lot 3, but closer to Hotenstein. And then two linear ones in front of the parking lot for Lot 1. And they're the same as was originally approved. We had to change the grading a little bit to make room for the berm, play with the outlet structures, but it's still the same, one above ground, two underground, and three above-ground MRC basins.
But from the approved plan, I thought I saw three more detention basins being built on this lot regarding highway work. So, how did that play along?
Yeah, I apologize if I misspoke. So, McMahon handled, is handling the HOP permit, and as part of that, they're handling stormwater within the right-of-way. For our NPDS permit, we submitted both, and they're looking at it as one. But you are correct, there will be BMPs within the Penn dot right-of-way to handle the widening within the Penn dot, within the Penn dot right-of-way.
And the approved plan, Lot 3, the sliver of ground left over between Lot, the building will say Hilltop Road and Quitstown Road. There was a proposed building at one time to be there. What's happening now with that piece of ground?
So, this thin piece of land between Hilltop and Route 222, we originally showed that was a developable piece of land with setbacks and driveways. After the Penn dot work proceeded more, it just took away all the land. So, now, this is not gonna be developed on its own, it's just gonna be part of Lot 3.
You had mentioned about karst studies. So, you have identified karst topography out there for potential sinkholes?
Yes, which is why the DEP was okay with the Managed Release Concept basins.
How would that affect the parking lots in the buildings then? If you have potential sinkholes out there?
So, again, the geotectical engineer designed a series of under drains, cutoff drains, to kind of mitigate the chance of that. We have, on our ENS plans, I believe, we have, you know, sinkhole repair details. But the geotectical engineer, through the DEP process, trying to minimize that as much as possible, which is why we're only infiltrating in one area. The MRC basins, the DEP prefers you do not line them, because even if you get bad infiltration rates, you might get something. But since this area is karst, they're letting us line those. We still get water quality from the runoff, basically filtering through the soil and the underdrain. But they'll all be lined with impervious liners to prevent runoff and reduce the chances of sinkholes.
I remember there were a lot of wetlands on this site, so if you're lining all your basins, how does that gonna affect all the wetlands that are there?
So, again, this is out of my area of expertise, but in, I've been coordinating with the environmental consultant, Liberty Environmental, as part of the DEP process. We do need a joint permit for disturbing area of wetlands for the new road crossing. And it's also counted as disturbance for removing the old road and the old eternus culvert that's there, restoring wetlands in that area. As part of that study, they need to show that we're not harming the functions or values of the wetlands. We don't have that permit yet, but it's in process, and it seems to be getting close.
Your opening statement, are the square footage of the buildings, have they stayed the same since the approved plan had now?
Yes.
What else?
Do you wanna hear about sewer water? Do you wanna hear about traffic? Do you hear about the major particular order?
I, I'm gonna ask a simple question. Back when we remember the history, you folks had suggested several improvements that you're gonna help Penn dot with, and you're gonna help from sewer and water. Those, I imagine, continue through.
Okay, I was just asked if we wanna hear about sewer and water? Do we wanna hear about road studies, et cetera? And my first question, the question I asked was, Duke had agreed to doing quite a bit of sewage workforce and as well as quite a bit of improvements to roads on 222 from the bypass up to Long Lane. Okay? I'm assuming that that's all exactly the same or improved?
Right, that's not changed.
Okay.
Jim, I have a question.
Yeah, go right ahead.
With the offer that was done back in, back in two and a half years...
With the offer that was made and part of the condition, I would make the recommendation to the board to reconsider some of those offers, since there's been quite a bit of cost increases and inflation over a period of time.
I bet you've already done the estimates.
Have you already done the estimates, or what the difference is gonna be? Or are we gonna say, hey, you're gonna give us a pipe from A to B, you're still getting the same pipe? Is that the easiest way to answer it?
I think there was only $1 amount that was offered.
Yeah.
And it was, so there's a traffic impact fee?
Yeah.
That will amount to $1.4 million.
Yeah.
On top of that, used as the township's fifth, there was a $600,000 contract.
Yeah.
So, I'm not sure what other improvements you had in mind to price that.
Okay. If I remember correctly, one of the things I heard was you would be connecting, I think you just said it, you're gonna run the sewer line down to the pump station on 737. Right, that's gonna be in your remit. Was there more coming down from the pump station by Coffee Road?
What he's saying is, they didn't put a dollar figure on that. They're doing all that work now, regardless how much more it's gonna cost.
That's what I thought. There's a pipe going from A to B, you're still paying for the pipe. Yeah, okay.
And if you wanna hear it out?
It would be good. We want everybody to understand, okay? So, it would be good, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Ron Madison, I'm with Colliers Engineering and Design, and we've been retained to provide potable water and sewage improvements, the full design permitting and construction of those. And I'll put up an exhibit here. Apologize if there was, would've been nice to have video projection with this large of a crowd, but this shows the whole area of Maxitani Township and Quitstown Borough. We started working with the Maxitani Township Municipal Authority in 2001, early 2001. Our firm did a public water and public sewer feasibility study that became the basis of a memorandum of understanding between Duke Realty and Maxitani Township Municipal Authority. Those improvements, this hatched area is the project area. But that feasibility study was based on a lot of comprehensive plan work done in 2006 and 2009 by Maxitani Township with Berks County, where the township wanted public water and sewer for the area of 222 and Long Lane, because of the public need for the existing development that was there. In building on that, rather than do private system that only served warehouses, we chose to work with the Maxitani Township Municipal Authority and doing many public sewer and public water improvements, where the applicant is the municipal authority. We're just providing the engineering, it's being reviewed by the authority engineer and being submitted to DEP for approval. The first improvement is in public water. There is a, going to be a public water supply well located onsite. It's got tremendous quantity of capability of water. Over 200 gallons a minute has been tested. We're only permit it for 69 gallons per minute. But that will be more than sufficient to supply both the site and have almost two times as much for future use by the surrounding area. There'll be a public treatment system, and because the water quality is in good shape, there was hardly any nitrates at all. It will be simply disinfection and storage in a local distribution system that can be expanded to serve the entire area.
So, there's gonna be a water tank placed on, in conjunction with the well?
It will be a below-grade tank underneath the water treatment system with booster pumps to add pressure to the system. So, there'll be no elevated tank. They'll also provide a fire pump, an emergency generator, so they meet the two-hour, 500-gallon-a-minute fire protection. Each warehouse will have their own independent fire protection system based on the tenant and their own sprinkler system. It'll be independent of the public water system. On the side of the public sewer, there'll be a regional sewage pumping station that's designed to serve, it's onsite, and it's designed to serve the needs of Valley Logistics Park, but it has the ability to serve the entire area with additional twice as much capacity. It will pump through a force main along the 222 corridor and discharge the existing IPS pump station owned by the authority that sits right in front of the Quitstown Borough Treatment Plant. That pump station is being modified for the additional flow, having some upgrades to it, some electrical upgrades, and it will continue to pump to the wastewater treatment plant. Originally, we committed to expanding the wastewater treatment plant. It's currently permitted for 140,000 gallons per day, and we committed to expand it with another treatment train up to 210. In our pre-application meetings with DEP, they believe it's premature and don't wanna see it expanded right now, but we're coming up with a game plan for some future contribution. The headworks of that pump station may need some modification, and we're doing that for the authority. The current treatment plant's only running about 30% capacity. So, even with this project, we're not even coming close to 50% of its capacity. In addition to that, really, if not any improvement needed for our project, Prologis has committed to upgrade the Coffee Lane Pump Station, which is south of Quitstown Borough, and construct the Coffee Lane Force Main all the way from the Coffee Lane Pump Station all the way through the borough, using the permits that were already planned for by Maxitani Township Municipal Authority. Prologis is committed to renew those permits and construct that facility at no cost to the authority. So, we're not just providing onsite public sewage, I mean onsite sewage for our project, or onsite water for our project. In reality, our client is the Maxitani Township Municipal Authority. We're doing all the design and permitting on behalf of the authority. Their engineers reviewing it, they're the applicant, but all the costs are borne by Prologis, both in the design, permitting, and construction. Once everything's fully approved and tested by DEP, it'll be dedicated for the future ownership of the authority, and they're being designed for the capacity to be able to serve the entire region. So, all the existing businesses there that may have 1960s septic systems can go into the regional pumping station. Be happy to answer any questions about public water and sewer.
Jim Bannon said he'd go over the changes that happened between the approval plan and this plan. So, is your summary, changes were just... So is your summary changes or just the reiterating of what was always happening?
As you know, we've been working with the authority since 2021 and having many meetings with Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, South Central Region. The commitment of the facilities hasn't changed. That's all happened. The details of that commitment and the permitting requirements have evolved while we deal with the comments from DEP.
So when the testing was done, what was the results? How it affected the surrounding area when you approved the groundwater out of the well?
For the potable water well?
Potable water, yes.
So we initially, long before we had met with the authority, there was a, contemplated an onsite private well. It was constructed, and what is done is a normal step test is to see what the potential yield would be, and that was pumped at 65, 85, and 195 gallons a minute. And based on that step test, we provided, you know, a potential safe yield of 200 gallons a minute. Once we started working with the municipal authority, we would have to drill a new well based on the location and then being a private well that has a different construction standards than a public well. So that was constructed and based on the step test.
Are you saying the well was already constructed?
Yes. So there is two wells onsite. There's an observation well, and there is the pumping well that will become the primary source for the public water supply. It was drilled to 400 feet. We submitted to DEP a Ocarifer test plan with all the monitoring of all the adjacent wells that would participate, and then the observation wells and monitoring of the wetlands. And that test plan was approved, and then the 72-hour pumping test was conducted and observed by DEP, and there was no negative impact to any of the adjacent wells. And we're still working with them. DEP has some concerns that there may be impacts to the wetlands. We've been monitoring the wetlands for over 18 months for any seasonal fluctuations which have been deemed far more seasonal fluctuations than actually occurred during the pumping test. So that's, we're going to permit the well only at 69 gallons a minute, because that's really all we need to serve both this park and the surrounding areas. But you always test it under worst-case scenario, so it was tested at 200 gallons a minute. If there was no negative impact at 200 gallons a minute, there'll be no negative impact at 69 gallons a minute.
So when you say there's no negative impact, so you actually monitored some properties nearby that you considered as no negative impact?
Yes. Every well, private well, was contacted within a quarter mile. Those who chose to participate were monitored.
Yeah, Chris, I went over the whole report.
Okay.
And Frankie, you up here? What was yours? 1.6 inches at the peak?
No, you have the scanner because I got that wrong.
Yeah, no, I thought so. Because when I went through the data, I couldn't find it. Okay, good deal. The worst, the biggest impact was 310 Hotenstein, 310 Hilltop or something. It's the one that was closest to it. But the well recovered, once I shut it off, the well recovered higher than it was when it started. Okay? And they had, they had to put up with some vandalism, which I wish hadn't incurred. There were people fooling around with the sensors. Okay? So we, I want to let you know, they did a pretty good test. It would be a complete waste of money for us to run the test again because the way it came back, the results were, you know, very detailed. But if somebody was out there fooling around with those sensors, we lost over 100,000 data points by taking those sensors out, right? I'm pretty close.
I don't know the exact, we had data sensors in many locations.
39, I think, is the number. Wasn't it 39? Yeah, okay, all right. But anyway, Chris, we, we did go over that pretty, Jerry was kind enough to give me, how many pages of stuff was it? It was a lot, okay? But I think that, you know, based on what they said and what I, you know, testing, testing had done, I think you did a good job doing the test, and I told the supervisor it would be a complete waste of money for us to rerun that test. Okay?
Any other questions on water and sewer? Otherwise, we'll move on to traffic.
Traffic, yeah. Okay, traffic.
Good evening. John Witchner with McMahon of OMID Company. Just an overall aspect of the traffic impact study, and I know Mr. Felinki wants us to kind of concentrate on changes. Back in 2019, we started this project like any other project that fronts on the state road. Before we do any traffic counts, before we do any traffic studies, before we do any designs, we submit a scoping application to Pendott. And what that does is it brings all stakeholders from a jurisdictional perspective into the room. That includes the township, that includes Pendott, the local district of Pendott, that includes the Berks County Planning Commission. We then use that process before we do anything else to determine the intersections of study, the methodologies to use, the assumptions to use, and then we begin our work. Throughout 2019 through 2021, I guess it is, we had gone through those traffic impact studies, presented them to the township and to Pendott, adding improvements along the way, and then that was the basis of the, of the approval to the township back in 2021. Since then, we have then worked through, we've taken then the next step, which is full and detailed roadway design plans for the improvements specifically along the state route system, 222 as well as Long Lane. I'm going to bring up a plan just to kind of show. I'm sorry. Oh, thank you. So there are two plans. This first plan shows conceptually the limits of work. It's about 4,500, 4,600 linear feet along 222 from right off the bypass all the way through Long Lane. Now, as the township knows, Pendott has a project on the books and funded for a new roundabout at the intersection of 222 and Long Lane. That is being done irrespective of this project before us tonight. For our improvements with the relocated Hotenstein Road as well as the initiation of the roundabout, our work was basically stopping at this point about one-third of the way to Long Lane, and there was a gap here between Pendott's work and our work. They have then asked us to kind of connect the dots for that work to make a consistent cross-section along 222. We are going through that process. It is a long process. I, I tell the team, my gray hairs are not from my kids, they're from the working with Pendott and the approval process. We still have about six months to go during that approval process. And much like Mr. Madison said on the water and sewer, not a lot has changed conceptually in terms of the geometry of what we see here tonight, with the exception of kind of that connection, connecting the dots and a few other items, but a lot of details have changed. One of the ones I want to, I do want to talk about is a previous concept that the township has seen focused on the roundabout, and a couple of years ago, there were, I'll call them sweeping radii as you travel up and down 222 to reduce speeds. Pendott has since, since that time, they have developed other design criteria to kind of achieve that same deceleration of speeds, but in a different type of geometry. So during this approval process, there are a lot of eyes on it. There's the Pendott local office and their review consultants. Pendott has also taken the initiative to institute a statewide roundabout review process to make sure all the roundabouts that are being designed and constructed in the state of Pennsylvania are as consistent as possible, given the contextual nature of geometry and horizontal curves and vertical curves and things of that nature. So the details of the sweeping radii as you enter into the roundabout have changed a little bit, and I'll kind of use this next plan. Before, they were kind of going closer to the Hotenstein House coming into the, to the roundabout because we now have more roundabouts constructed in the state of Pennsylvania. They're now analyzing those roundabouts, and they're starting to fine-tune and make more consistent the designs statewide. So we have a layer of the local Pendott office, we have central office at Pendott, the township's own traffic consultant is also a reviewer for Pendott as a consultant, knowing all the Pendott regulations as well. Again, we have, we've been going through the design process for about two years. We still have about six months to go, I anticipate. There are some other changes that the township has asked us to make regarding trucks, regarding signage, and those are being implemented into these plans. It's kind of a moving target, and what we've tried to do, and really is a requirement of Pendott, is to bring the township along every step of the way. In the scoping meetings, copied on every submission to Pendott, every, every meeting we have with Pendott, bringing township representative to, to those meetings. So that has kind of been every step of the way. I focused on this roundabout here at Hotenstein. I also do want to talk about two other improvements. We have added additional improvements to Pendott's design on the roundabout of Long Lane with an additional right-turn bypass lane on that. So we are coordinating with Pendott to add to their design at that intersection. And then also off the plan, there are some improvements at the off-ramps to 737 as well, additional right-turn lanes on the off-ramp as well as northbound 737 to get onto 222. As Mr. Felinki and Mr. Bannon were talking about, there are BMPs along the state right-of-way to accommodate stormwater management for the additional widening along 222. And as Mr. Davis had also mentioned, there is a, regardless of the improvements, the township does have, has enacted a, an Act 209 traffic impact fee, which requires the applicant to, to provide a fee for the additional traffic. But, but the interesting thing, or the, you know, the one aspect that, you know, Pendott does not recognize township traffic impact fees, so we can't get credit for them. So they say they don't control that money, they don't care about that money. They, in fact, they've emphatically said to us, and I believe township staff was, was on a call with Pendott at one time, they said, "We are going to hold this applicant to the same regulations, requirements, and standards as we held every other applicant in the district, and that is to mitigate your impacts," which the approved traffic study and these improvements do. And to the chairman's point earlier, I believe we were estimating $4.5 to $5 million two years ago for these improvements, that certainly that number has, has risen, but none of those improvements have, have been taken off the table. They've actually really only been added to because of the additional permitting process that we've gone through in the last two years. Yes?
This planning commission has been faced with numerous applications from developers for warehouses, and it's no secret that one of the primary concerns of adjoining residents and people that use these thoroughfares is traffic. Every transportation impact study that I look at from the developer concludes that the development will not significantly impact the traffic in the area. And I, and I think there's a, an apprehension about those conclusions. I don't know what the cost of these studies are. I imagine it's significant. But is it within the realm of possibility that the developer would agree, and not just you, but there are other developers with similar projects in the township, if the developers would agree to periodically update the traffic studies after the project is in to determine whether or not the conclusion that this isn't going to have a significant impact is true or not? And the obvious purpose in an update, in my mind, and maybe, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but the obvious purpose would be that if the conclusions were incorrect and there was some significant negative impacts as a result of the traffic generated by the development, that the developer would sit down with the township to address those problems. Is that a condition that you believe your client would be willing to entertain a subsequent traffic impact study?
There were a couple of comments made, I guess, during those questions in terms of the conclusion of the traffic study. I always put in my conclusions of the traffic study that the site, that the roadway can accommodate the site-generated traffic with the implementation of the recommended improvements. So I do want to say that, you know, again, goes back to the requirement that Pendott holds of us is to mitigate the impact. So, you know, with the improvements, $4.5 to $7 million, maybe what it could be today, again, my conclusion is with the implementation of the recommended improvements. You, you then talk about what we kind of call in the industry a post-development study. That, interestingly enough, that is a, in our conversations with Pendott, we anticipate that to be a condition of our highway occupancy permit with Pendott. And I also have in my traffic study that has been approved by Pendott, per the request of Pendott, a post-development study to confirm the projected trip generation should be completed upon full buildout of the proposed development. And because we anticipate that, that condition on the highway occupancy permit, Pendott does have a right to, at, at full buildout, full occupancy, to require the applicant to do that post-development study. What we have seen, there are two aspects of my study that I am confident that when we do that post-development study, that we're going to see that either we're on the mark or more conservative, and there's a couple of different reasons why. One is we, we were conservative in our trip generation for this study. We base it upon a higher number of potential employees instead of what the industry typically does, which is base it on the square footage of the buildings. And that, that increased our trip generation and therefore increased the amount of traffic we have to mitigate by about 30%. So I feel as though we're going to be capturing, or that post-development study is going to show that we're on the mark or even more conservative. The other thing that we've seen is as we have done other counts throughout the area, our counts were, were conducted pre-COVID. All the counts that we've seen in many of the areas have, actually have been reduced since, since COVID has occurred, and Pendott now calls it the new normal. You know, it's, it's because of potential hybrid work situations or things like that, but we have seen typically counts in the area be reduced from pre-pandemic numbers. However, all that being said, we anticipate that condition being a condition on Pendott's highway occupancy permit. I can't recall if that was a condition of a, of the previous approval through land development here in Maxitani Township, but we anticipate doing those, doing those post-development studies.
John, have you or your firm done any of these post-development studies and about anywhere in the area here?
We have done studies, and maybe I'll use Lower Nazareth Township in North Hampton County as example, just because it was the most recent. We have done studies at warehouse buildings along Hanover Road in Lower Nazareth Township that does show that the typical users of, and tenants of buildings are more automated. They generate less traffic than what the Institute of Transportation Engineers would suggest. And I think one of the reasons is that warehouses have changed over the years. The ITE, or Institute of Transportation Engineers, has collected data from the 1980s to the 2010s. A lot has changed with warehouse, with the warehousing industry in that timeframe. So when we get to tenants in 2023, 2025, things like that, I think we're going to continue to see less traffic. I was I was required to use all the data from the 1980s through the 2010s, which we've seen based upon those post-development studies, is to be conservative. And we can provide that data to the township as well.
So how does PennDOT look at the fact that you did your original studies in TIS where, back in pre-COVID, 2019, 2020, or 23, potentially you could be under construction 24, maybe 25 with an actual occupancy? How old or how stale is that study? When do you say enough's enough, you got to do that study again?
PennDOT still views, PennDOT knows this is a long process. They still view, they view that approved traffic study as a valid traffic study, which they are basing all the required improvements off of. In addition to that, we have done some counts in this area along 222 recently. In our traffic study, we, not only we count 2019, 2020 conditions, existing conditions, we then grow or forecast traffic volumes 10 years out. So our traffic, all of our traffic improvements are based upon 10 years' worth of growth in this area to 2029. So we apply annual background growth factors to each of these different counts. In our study, when we do an apples-to-apples comparison, what we had anticipated that would be occurring in 2023 versus counts that we've conducted in 2023, the counts that we have conducted recently in 2023 range between 7% to 10% less than what we had anticipated in our traffic study. So as we kind of continued that process down the road, we're starting to, lack of better term, overestimate what we thought was going to happen in 2029, and all the improvements are based upon those higher 2029 volumes. And we can provide that information to the township as well. We're anticipating presenting that during a conditional use hearing.
So in between your approval and today, there have now been two other warehouses proposed around this project. How does that affect what you've done in your study?
So we use the growth factors as I had anticipated, or as I had mentioned. We also provide all of our information, all of our data, to the developers or the engineers for, say, 310 Hilltop Road, for them to kind of build on top of each other those volumes. And so they're, they have then, because they are coming in sequentially according to PennDOT, because they are coming in second, they then build on top of our traffic study, and then they have to specifically mitigate their improvements. It allows us to kind of bifurcate or isolate the impacts, and they've been able to do that.
So is there a possibility that New Prologis could do this improvement on the highway, and then two years later, 310 Hilltop will have to make more improvements and change everything around again?
It's my understanding that 310 Hilltop is within this PennDOT permitting process as well, and it's the same reviewers at PennDOT's local office, it's the same consultant reviewers with PennDOT. There's a lot of full transparency here, so they know what the other hand is doing. So I'm not involved with that approval process, but what I imagine is that there, if PennDOT feels as though there's going to be some overlap of improvements, they may bring the two applicants together, but they have not suggested that at this point. But that has happened in the past.
One of the other approval of the plan, there was talk about a vibration study for the Hottenstein House. I don't know if you're involved with that or not, but obviously you're traffic-related and the traffic would buy that house. Can you speak to that at all?
That's a little bit outside of my area of expertise. What I do want to point out is, the changes which I have talked about is moving, moving the roundabout further away from, say, Hottenstein House. The access is further away, the Hottenstein Road is moved further away, the travel lane along 222 is moved further away from the Hottenstein House as well. My area of expertise is not vibration studies.
So is PennDOT proposing to lower the speed in this section? Because we've been asking them to do that for years.
In terms of posted speed, they have not, they have not asked us to reduce the speed. What they've asked us to do is implement design criteria in the roundabout design to basically physically reduce the speeds of those vehicles. So because they are entering and encountering horizontal curves, we've designed this roundabout between 25 and 35 miles per hour through the roundabout, and that starts to kind of decrease those speeds throughout the corridor.
So the planning board can get a visual. You're talking potentially two roundabouts within a half mile each other. Very similar to what happened in Maiden Creek today, which I'm sure you're, being a traffic consultant, you probably know all about, but what PennDOT did. How does this relate to that? Is this smaller scale than that effort, or is this the same scale?
Geometrically, I can't answer exactly how that compares to Maiden Creek. One of the reasons why PennDOT has asked us to increase, I guess, increase the improvements, or in other words, connect the dots, is because they want those roundabouts to then kind of work in concert with each other. Slower design speeds through Long Lane, continue those slower design speeds through Hottenstein Road, but I can't comment on what's happening in Maiden Creek.
Would these roundabouts then be about the same size of the Maiden Creek roundabouts or smaller? Because, for example, the one at 662 is very small, the one up in the Poconos is smaller, but yet Maiden Creek is so large. So which way is PennDOT going with these roundabouts?
They're going a little larger, and 222, as we know, carries all sorts of different vehicle types, including trucks. And so they want to make sure that they accommodate all vehicle types. And what we've seen is that, especially with PennDOT implementing kind of a statewide review, they're starting to kind of have that consistency throughout the state. That's why we're seeing, as I mentioned before, conceptually, it's roughly the same, but because other review agencies have gotten involved, some of the details have changed. One of those details is making sure that there's enough room for trucks, passenger vehicles to navigate the roundabout, as well as implementing a manable concrete apron in the middle of the roundabout. But I have been seeing the geometry get a little bit bigger in the last couple of years.
Can you speak to the improvements at 737? Are we going to make Eagle Point Road unaccessible in your project, or is not being touched in your project? Eagle Point is just north of 737.
We are, we were asked to make improvements at 737 and the off-ramps there of 222. A right turn lane, it's about 300 feet in length on the off-ramp, as well as another right turn lane on northbound 737 for vehicles that's coming out of Cuts Town to get onto 222. One of the reasons why we're spending so much money on the 222 corridor is because we don't want to give drivers a reason to avoid it. They should be there, that the design is intended for those vehicle types. Mr. Bannon had talked about other design criteria on the site to discourage trucks going where they shouldn't be going, different radii, cul-de-sacs in the end of Hottenstein, things of that nature. PennDOT has required us to spend money on the 222 corridor because that's where they want the vehicles to go to. They don't want to give them a reason to look elsewhere.
Well, what about employees? The employees, you have no control over that. Wouldn't they be using those back roads?
As a public road, they can use those back roads. The township, two years ago, independent of the PennDOT required traffic study, the township had required us to study two other local intersections, Eagle Point and Hilltop, Eagle Point and Hottenstein. If you remember the analysis, what we did was we did a hypothetical, what if 10% uses local roads? What if 25% uses local roads? What if 50% of the passenger vehicles use local roads? And we're still seeing level of service be, and I know we haven't really talked level of service here tonight, but somewhere to school, A being the best, F being the worst, we're still seeing levels of service be or better on those local roads. Again, it is a public road, but another reason why we're spending money on the 222 corridor, that's where we want them to be. But in terms of passenger vehicles, they are entitled to use some of those roads. But we, our studies have, in the hypothetical, kind of done that threshold analysis to analyze those vehicles.
Jim had mentioned that you're involved with the design of stormwater for the highway block, so these are quite large basins also being installed. Who is going to own those basins?
That is still being discussed with PennDOT during the highway occupancy permit process. PennDOT certainly wants access to them. We're not clear on the ownership at this point. And that's really, I think, what the next six months is mainly going to be about, agreements, ownership of basins, right-of-way, those types of things. Because as we've gone through this process in the last two years, the geometry is relatively set. It's all the additional administrative items. That is something that we are talking with PennDOT, and we'd be happy to bring the township into those conversations.
Well, Jim mentioned about his basins being lined, lined, so what's the story? Are these being lined too? Because that would be, it's right next to the Hottenstein House. A very big concern in my book, so.
I have, we have a team designing these roadway improvements. I can't speak to that, but I can give you that information.
Good evening. Ben Muller with Ostergaard Acoustical Associates. So I know the focus of tonight's discussion has primarily been on changes, so regarding the acoustical study, there have been none. We will fully comply with all local and state ordinances. We're not going to have a negative impact on any of the surrounding areas. And as you've heard, the changes that have been made, such as relocating or moving the right-of-way further from the Hottenstein House, et cetera, are only doing things to move traffic further away from the nearest residences. So is there specific questions about noise? I could also give a summary of what we've done for.
I would like, I'm interested in exactly that, the noise against the Hottenstein House and how that, did you actually do a study to determine if it's not going to be a problem? What did you do?
Sure. We start off by looking at noise codes, right? What's our state? What's our local limit? We do have a local noise code, so we use that for our primary guidance. The local code discusses maximum levels, allowable levels for certain periods of time. And so generally, what you'll see is that the higher the level, the lower the permissible time limit is. So people can be exposed to or observe a high level of sound for a short period of time, and that'd be less impactful than if you were to have a steady noise 100% of the time at a higher threshold. So that's along the lines of how the local noise code works. We can use that as our guidelines. We had to come up with some interpretation, especially for motor vehicles. So the state of Pennsylvania regulates motor vehicles using a relative code. At 50 feet from a heavy truck, for example, they provide a specific limit. Because that's relative to the vehicle and not to a receptor, it's, you could still be in compliance with the state code and potentially have an impact. So while that's applicable, all motor vehicles will have to comply with that, it's not relative in our acoustical evaluation. Also then pertaining to the zoning code for the town here, they do not regulate motor vehicle noise. It's a discussion of continuous sound, and also the regulations are at the site's property line, which we would also use as an example of why motor vehicles are not regulated under that, because they can cross the property line. So you would see, if it was regulated that way, you would see that motor vehicles would exceed the code every time they crossed the property line. So what we did is we used those limits that are within the code. Specifically, they have for 50% of the time, the limits are limited to 50 dB, and during the nighttime hours, that limit reduces to 40. So what we use as design criteria for our project, that's both buildings, is that HVAC, which is going to be the 24-hour presence, should comply with the 40 dB a noise code limit. And then for motor vehicles, for our truck activity onsite, we did select a 50 dB a limit for receptors to the north, which are more remote from 222. So that's all receptors that are up remote from 222. For the receptors that are along 222, because that's an existing roadway, and that's, there's existing noise presence there, we set a limit of 55 down there. And so while those limits, for you to give a grounding to it, the town code has maximum permissible limits of 60 and 70 during the nighttime and daytime hours respectively. So we're setting project goals to be well below what that ordinance allows, and that's based on observation of the area, of the area with other noise codes, and just understanding what, our goal here is to, and the intent of the code is to minimize the acoustical impact. So we've established those. The next thing we do is we do an acoustical model. So the design team comes up with this in a CAD format. We take that, import it using GIS topographical information in the area, we fill in the blanks of what's happening outside of our property, and then we take noise sources from our in-house database. I've personally surveyed dozens of warehouses. So we have truck information, we have HVAC information, and we populate our model, and we show how the rooftop equipment is going to emanate off-site. We show how, because the topography slopes up towards the north here, how that is going to change how that sound radiates to off-site vantage points. We show how truck activity in the outer perimeter of the site, which is going to be the closest distance to existing residences, and how that travels off-site to reach them. And the noise code is independent of ambient conditions. So while we didn't do any specific ambient sound study, what we're saying is that if anything onsite produces limits that are below the project goals and conform with the noise code, that they will not have any negative impact and will not disrupt sleep and cause complaints. That's the primary goal.
Where I was getting at is, so what you didn't, you did not actually stand out there and do a noise study currently today?
Correct. And the primary reason is that that's irregardless. We know that the noise level along 222 is currently present. We could look at how that might change.
Well, that's why I'm getting at it. I was trying to get a basis to say, okay, today it's, you assume 55, but maybe today is 65. So how do you then take something today at 65 and get it down to 55 in your assumption? See what I'm getting at, Stuart?
Well, to your point, let's say that, let's go over three scenarios. One is that the existing conditions here along 222 are lower than what we're forecasting, which I don't believe. So with respect to that, if we're contributing 50 to residences along there, which are our nearest receptors, and the roadway's contributing levels below that, our noise would dominate, and that would be the 50 received at a receptor. But that level is of a magnitude that is sufficiently low to not cause an adverse impact. To give you an example, 50 dB a is roughly being three feet away from my refrigerator in the middle of the night when I'm having that late-night snack. So it's a, it's a low-level, you know, volume. That's an example.
My refrigerator is pretty quiet.
And so is 50. To give you another data point there, a normal conversation at three feet is 65. To give you another data point there, a normal conversation at three feet is 65. So us talking at 65 versus the ambient sound in your kitchen, that's what we're striving to achieve, yes.
So that's full of the jake brakes.
So jake brakes, I don't have a number for you. I do know that they are a nuisance. The use of them, so what I can speak to here is, and I don't know whether they're currently prevalent in the area, and I know 222 carries a lot of trucks, but I do know that they are, it's an engine-retardant braking system. They basically use their transmission to slow the vehicle down instead of using their brakes, and that results in a high noise level. So the use of that is primarily used on downhill to reduce their speed, and you see that a lot on the parkways and interstates. But what's going to happen is because we're introducing two new roundabouts in the project, the vehicle's speed is not going to be high enough to warrant that, right? If they're coming in and have to go through one turn, a roundabout, and another roundabout, the area surrounding the site here is not going to be prime conditions for vehicles.
There's not much traffic. There's not much traffic. Can we go fast? We're going to jake brake.
Potentially. I'm not an expert on how truck drivers utilize it. I've observed it in personal conditions. You know, for example, if they're coming in at a higher speed here, and they're approaching the roundabout, then this could potentially be where that, something like that might occur. But if speaking directly only to our project here, and maybe let's go over the other two roadway conditions here before I touch back on that. So let's assume that we have a situation where the road here is contributing 50 at these residences fronting on 222, and we're going to contribute 50. The way the additive properties of sound work, it's logarithmic in nature. And so 50 plus 50 equals 53, not 100. And so what you find is that you can have a bunch of noise sources that are all about the same level, and then eventually you can add the 10th or the 11th, and you're not receiving a noticeable change in that sound pressure level. So my condition, assumption number two here is that we're producing about the same level, in which case levels will increase by about three, which is going to be just about noticeable if you were, have a keen ear. Condition number three then would be, let's say that the roadway contributes levels of 65, and we're contributing levels of 50. Again, logarithmic nature, 60 plus 55 equals, 65 plus 50 equals 65. There'll be no additive increase in sound level because the delta is so great. So I envision, not without having surveyed here, I've been in the area and just have personally observed it, but there is sufficient enough traffic on here to have levels that are significantly higher than the design goals that we have here. And that is the purpose of the noise study, is that with the introduction of this site, that we're not changing, adversely changing existing conditions. Going back to the jake brake, we know again that there is a percentage of vehicles on 222 that are already heavy trucks. So if there is a current condition that is occurring, the amount of vehicles and trucks that are being added from this project are such a small part of the whole, that if that is, condition is occurring now, it will likely continue, but this approval of this project will not exacerbate that occurrence.
I live in the Hockstein House, and right now, maybe three or four people are living around the house. It's not going to be that when you make these improvements. And I look at that roundabout, you have two detention basins, water on echo that sounds even louder, and there's not a plant or a shrub between that roundabout and that house. So how are you going to block any of that sound if it carried right through the house? How can a window be right through that house?
This is your property right here? Or this is your reside? So the roadway is currently considerably closer.
I don't care about that. I care about the fact that everybody's turning next to my house, and it's going to be far louder than it's ever been, and there's no screening or landscaping between me and that sound.
I guess I don't understand why we would conclude that because the vehicles are turning that they're going to be louder.
Breaking and passing by, they don't make much sound compared to when they're turned. Turning is a big difference in sound, braking.
Not in my experience, with all due respect. So noise produced by vehicles is relative to their speed. So faster vehicles produce more noise, lower-speed vehicles produce less noise. Yes?
It's not represented on this plan, and it has all the screen and planning or proposed. I didn't see anything between the roundabout and the house. Yes, correct. When this plan is not represented, it wasn't in the plan, it's even related to the arcs and screening that are inside the house. So which drawing is to that? I'll let Mr. May not represent it.
So I'll carry it over, because it is small. It's small at this scale. Like you see the property here, there is screening before it and after as well.
So I guess just rounding out the things that were done, I just also want to make a point that the noise sources onsite, we've collected all the activities that would occur. So higher-level activities would be compression brake release, coupling to coupling, backup alarms, both tonal as well as the more modern shusher broadband alarms, and as well as driving trucks. Driving truck activity is among the lower level of all those activities. So that is the collection of activity that we put in all the four corners of each property to show that upon occurrence, that the limits will be below 50 at all residential receptors. We included the church here to the north as the closest receptor of interest there.
Are you the vibration expert then, Jim?
I can't be.
So question I asked John about the vibration of the trucks turning, being so close to the Hockstein House, how would you address that?
Certainly. So your ordinance calls for vibration to not emanate off-site that is detectable without instrumentation. So that would be my foot, right? We want to look at whether or not I can feel vibration coming off the site. And while we didn't do a specific vibration analysis here, and again, those codes would apply to vehicles that are within our site, I am 1,000% confident that no tangible vibration will come off-site. And the reason is because of the separation between all of the concrete asphalt area of the parking area, and that we have earth and soil surrounding it. So as soon as vibration will transmit rapidly through a solid structure, but as soon as it reaches earth, it is very porous, and vibration dissipates almost immediately. I've specifically done vibration measurements three feet from an emergency generator or from any sort of noisy equipment, and not able to have tangible vibration off-site. So regarding the code, we're going to be fully compliant in that. Discussing.
Have you been in a condition when, during construction, the vibratory roller is rolling by at McAdam? Have you stood next to a vibratory roller and feel how that vibration does travel?
I am familiar with that. I don't have any physical data to present to you, but when we would do any sort of construction, those improvements or those activities would be temporary in nature. We would follow all construction noise codes, or construction codes, which usually the focus there is that it's within allowable hours. We would focus the construction during the daytime so that doesn't impact neighbors at night. But to your point, you're specifically introducing vibration into the ground. I have done vibration monitoring for pile driving. Things like that are substantial vibration activities. Construction, I would say, is temporary in nature. And if there was some sort of a high level of vibration associated with that, the recognition would be that it would be coordinated with the nearest parties and addressed in that manner.
So then how about the trucks that are daily, daily turning, as Robin mentioned? Now we're talking injuries in trucks turning down Hockstein that didn't go that way before.
Right. Well, as far, again, regardless of the number, and this would be for both sound and vibration, the turn is substantially further away than what the roadway currently is. So, and I would just default to your experience for, to give this a face, but are you experiencing vibration within your house from?
I've had 14 cars come out of my property and hit various things and nearly take me out.
The vibration from an accident, I don't think is what we're contemplating here. I think those are, no one wants those things to happen. But from the roadway noise, do you have any tangible vibration within your dwelling?
Sure. There's some steel plate out on the highway. Every time somebody hits that, it shakes my house.
Those features should be addressed, because the steel plate is not a permanent.
It shakes my house the most, makes the windows flip back and forth in their frames.
So the traffic circle, going back to the jake brake discussion, the traffic circle is going to prevent vehicles from jake braking within the vicinity. And the fact that the road is being moved further away is only going to improve that situation of what's existing. And then again, tying back into what we're here to talk about is this application, the introduction of our vehicles to the existing content of the roadway are not going to have, are not changing anything that's currently there in a negative way. To give you numbers to point to, we could, and this is not even our project, but could be other projects in the area, et cetera, if you doubled the volume of traffic on a roadway, it increases the hourly average by 3 dB. So when we're talking about how you have an additive effect from multiple noise sources, when you look at that, you would need to get twice as many vehicles in order to see that average level start to go up. So I think that that should hopefully help put into perspective of how small our project is with respect to what's currently going on here, and will continue to go on regardless of improvements in the local area. The traffic through here is going to other projects that are going on in many other
Traffic study, the intersections to study, the methodologies, the assumptions to study. We are complying with all bend eye requirements for the intersections that were studied. And the Berks County Planning Commission and township had a hand in the creation of those of which intersections to study. We are required to comply with those regulations. And I can't speak to existing conditions.
So then with my last moment, I ask the planning commission, and I will ask the township as well, the supervisors, to please hear us when we're saying that we are extremely affected by this truck traffic, by this commuter traffic that's already in place. And these studies are not sufficient to show how these things will affect our community and our lives.
My name's Peter Carrick. I'm not going to go very long because Maya spoke for what I wanted to say. But I think you guys live in Lala Land. I really do. The world that trucks listen to you. They know in a world that they listen to any rule you set. I still haven't heard you answer Don's statement. How are you going to stop the trucks from crossing the center lane? Don, you want to ask it again? It's the same thing. Are you going to show that picture? They're not going to do that. I've been run off the road at curves. Trucks are designed to be precisely three inches less than the width of a road. There's no one. No one drives them. You'll never see a truck that drives within its lane, let alone on a curve. So I'm not going to go any further except that your rules are asking for the impossible. They're not going to do it. Besides, we are asking you to be more compliant with the state rules. We're asking you to be a neighbor. The reality of the matter is, this isn't going to work here.
I also have a question about the traffic study that was done in apparently 2019. Is something going to be done again since rudders came in? Because the traffic with rudders alone has tripled. I also would like to know the number of projected jobs that these warehouses are going to bring to Maxitani? And how many, what's the percentage of Maxitani residents that will actually work at these warehouses? And with the roundabout on Hotenstein, are the locals going to be able to drive through and get to the other side of Eagle Point? Or is it only for the warehouses?
I can take that last question. Hotenstein Road will remain a public road, and that can be utilized as it is today. It'll be relocated. And in lieu of, right now it's difficult to get onto 222 from Hotenstein Road. This roundabout does allow for the entrance on 222 or the exit of 222. But local traffic can utilize that as they do today.
With the status of the development right now, it depends on the end customer for that development. You can have anywhere between 250 and 500 construction jobs to start with on the project. And then each building can hold anywhere between 150 to 350 employees, depending on the operations of the site. Hence why we've designed the parking, the automobile parking the way we have right now.
Just a little bit. And the 50-foot berm that obviously was discussed very significantly in the prior presentation has now been added to this particular project. So I think you all know this project is 15132 West Cootstown Road. This is the former, where the existing airport diner, the helipad, the Airport Mobile Home Park with the failing septic system. All that's going to go away. Okay? And I know that causes some people here some aggravation. But essentially, what we're proposing here is that the plan that has been submitted will essentially take the 75.5 acres. And it'll subdivide that into Lot 1, which is 6.48, six acres upfront. To be clear, all uses on that lot will be demoed. There will be nothing left. That'll be a vacant lot that'll come in with a separate plan at some point in the future. No idea what that's going to be. That's not what we're here to talk about. That's just part of the subdivision. Lot number 2 is going to be approximately 66.214 acres. That's the LI district and partially the AP 1 district. Back here, the little hill, the boot that we've always talked about. No development going on in the AP district. Everything is located in the LI. That warehouse is proposed to be 709,000 square feet. Currently, that is 510 feet by 1,400 feet. So quite literally, ladies and gentlemen, that is the overview that I intend to give you this evening with respect to the recommendation. You have pretty significant review letters that came from Mr. Filenki and Mr. Pfaff, and also from your fire marshal. So that being said, I would certainly, if Mr. Filenki or Mr. Pfaff have some specific items, I mean really specific issues with respect to the plan, we could try to address them. But other than that, that's what I'm asking you to make your recommendation off of this evening.
Mr. Cuff, in space as a buffer, as a use associated with Lot 1, perhaps the medevac.
Mr. Pfaff, I would say to answer that question is we will listen to anything that the planning commission has to say, whether or not we can agree to it or make it work. That I don't know. We will certainly, as we have all the way through this process, be willing to have a dialogue and continue to have an open dialogue. Would need to find, or what are examples of non-intended impacts that would then trigger health, safety, or welfare? Because I don't know what they are.
I assume that's a question for yours, sir.
It seems like you're laying out a case, dude.
There's two things I wanted to bring up to your attention. The first main one that I think about is the indirect cost of this warehouse coming into our township. It's right located right next to Cootstown University. And a lot of people go to Cootstown University because it's a quaint, small-town environment. This nice, quiet area. My thought is, if this warehouse comes up, this 24-hour operation with all these trucks and all this noise, and the second thing is the safety issues. Oh, hello. My thought is, my question to you is, have you taken into consideration the indirect cost of putting this warehouse up? Because I can easily imagine that if the warehouse is put up, not a lot of people will want to be going to Cootstown University next to a 24-hour operation, noisy, polluting warehouse. And a lot of these students go into Main Street of Cootstown and contribute a lot to the local economy. So my question is, have you taken into consideration the indirect costs of putting this warehouse up? My second question is, have you taken into consideration the safety costs? We recently had an issue with an injury on Cootstown Road because the Cootstown University is split between two roads. You know, we talked about before about not, these truckers, we don't know if they're going to, you know, follow the rules of like, you're going to go down this road and stuff like that. So my thought is, if they're going down Cootstown Main Road, down Cootstown Road, down Cootstown University, have you taken into consideration, you know, it's going to be a rainy day or maybe a winter day? The roads are a little bit slippery. An 18-wheeler can't stop too quickly. And another person in our, another student at our university gets hit. I just wonder if you have taken into consideration the safety issues that come with building this warehouse?